Howdy, howdy, and thank you everyone for tuning in. I want to thank everyone that tried to bear with me through the live last night. I apologize for the technical difficulties. I actually showed up about a little after 3 o'clock to make sure I could connect to the Wi-Fi and set up the live before 4 o'clock. But sometime after that, between the city maintenance workers and Dan Cutter unlocking the building for everyone, the Wi-Fi mysteriously stopped working. They were saying they were updating it. So I do apologize for that. But let's get into this meeting and see what happened for the rest of the meeting, which resulted in it being concluded early due to public outburst. Thank you and enjoy. And if you want to support my journalism, please share, like, and subscribe these videos. Thank you very much.
What's under the minutes? I have to go back and listen to see if that was actually said to add it into the minutes. But what I can do is I can make a comment that, you know, to clarify the comment instead of like actually changing the minutes. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's a little addition to it.
Thank you. All right. So then, anybody want to make a motion to pass this considered agenda?
I move adoption of the senate agenda.
And second? All in favor?
Hi.
Can I hit the second, move the second?
I did. And councillor Booth, did you abstain?
I abstained because I was not here for one part of...
And I don't know. For the reasons about the executive session. Thank you. All right, moving on to public comment. Looks like our first to sign up is Todd Swift.
Trying to hide behind Karen. So concerns. Put my notes here. So there were some things I think we worked collaboratively. Thank you for having the meeting with us, by the way. That was great. And I liked the open communication online. I brought up a concern with a hill of asphalt that a friend had sent me some pictures of in the slough. And when I reported it, Greg said he was going to check into it. Susan, full credit to her. She said, thanks for reporting the problem to us. Someone told Greg it was ODFW. And I don't know what's going on, but I don't know if you want to call it a fabrication, misinformation. It's a flat-out lie. It was not ODFW. Township 13, we want to work with you guys. We feel we're at that point now where we're being collaborative. We have concerns because there's all these pictures coming in of trash and asphalt and construction leavings in the slough. So if there's nothing bad going on there, why say, oh, it's ODFW? Why give misinformation to a city councillor? Why do this without the council's knowledge? And the main concern is, is there something going on that shouldn't be going on? Oregon law by statute 133535 clearly states that the state or the government can seize your property, including real estate, if it was used in the commission of a crime. We would like to know what's going on. And we would like some kind of report from an investigatory body saying, hey, we looked into it. There's nothing going on. So we, although we would love the state to come in and seize our roads and be like, okay, you fix them now. That's not ethical. So we would just like to know what's going on. And we'd rather do it here in the meeting. And let's get it worked out. And let's get everything out in the open. Thanks. Oh, Susan.
Yeah, I'm confused about it. Where are we talking about? Because the slough is not township 13 that I'm aware of.
Oh, okay, no, not using the township 13 roads to access Lent Slough and that area to dump whatever's being dumped back there. And the picture I'm referencing is the one that a friend sent me that was reported to Greg Dunn was leftover from ODFW tearing the dam down years ago.
Because I think he was talking about Lent Slough.
Right, and you have to put in that post Lent Slough Trail.
Right.
So when I got ahold of people and said, what have we ever done? We've never done nothing by the trail. The only work that's ever been done was the dam removed. So now if you're talking about that pile was behind township, well, that's not Lent Slough Trail. That's a totally different area.
And that's on me, Greg, because I'm kind of unfamiliar back there because I've never actually been back there. My concern is when it was, when I showed the picture and maybe, yeah, my words weren't exact. When, my understanding is when a deputy looked at it and asked a city worker, hey, what is this? And the response was, oh, that's leftover from the Crestline project. So there's two different stories going on. So we're just, we're concerned about that.
Where is the piles that you're talking about?
Somewhere in the wetlands, which, why is there asphalt in wetlands?
I didn't answer the question. Okay, so we're talking about two different...
Did this come out of my three minutes?
No.
So if I may, the query that we originally got was on Lent Slough Trail. Lent Slough Trail is bought right correctly next to the slough, next to the wastewater plant. There has been one capital improvement project in the last 20 years down there. And that was a project through ODFW and two other entities. And the city did play a part. But they removed the dam at the end of the slough, which created a very different watershed environment in that locale. And any leavings that would be down on the Lent Slough Trail would likely be from that project. And that was when we got a picture of asphalt. That is what we assumed, like, oh, that's probably just leavings from the removal of that project. I know that at the bottom on my property, I have a stack of concrete that they left there. They also crushed up a bunch of asbestos pipe and left it there. But the EQ was called at the time about the asbestos pipe and said, this is not aerial asbestos. It was not a concern. I disagreed, but nonetheless, that's along the Lent Slough Trail. The subsequently, we have gotten a lot of photos of asphalt chunk. At the end of Ball Drive, the city owns a large 14-inch piece of property, which was discussed at length on the October 16 meeting, in which we are building from the top of that piece, since it is now adjacent to the wastewater plant, we are building a road down to the wastewater plant. Asphalt from the Crestline project, which is what was, you know, would have come had, when the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office talked to us at that different location, that is asphalt that was created by cutting the roads or the sidewalks that are going in. Chunk asphalt is allowed based on a determination by the creator as a beneficial use to create and fill when creating a road. We used it for that purpose. And that's why it was placed there by a contractor to improve and lengthen the road that we are attempting to generate down to the slough.
Excellent.
And then, so...
Did you want to tell me about that?
Yeah. So my concern with that is, if that's the case, if there's nothing nefarious going on, okay, plausible. Why are we threatening people with arrest? Why are we throwing up no trespassing signs? Why are we being so, like, why are we hearing one thing over here and another thing over there? And we would just like clarification as to what's going on. And that's it.
Thank you very much for your public comment. All right, then, that was unusual. Usually, the council does not reengage with public comment. But I appreciated the conversation. So then the next on the list is Teresa Carter.
Dump thing because I take issue with some things, Dan. Asphalt has...
Could you please address councillor, not Dan? No, no, sorry, just keep it...
Anyway, asphalt does carry oils in it, which can damage the environment. Plain and simple. And I've seen enough logging roads built. You don't add soil. You cut away soil because you want it solidly packed. And I don't want anything happening to any of our public works people because it's basically setting it up to fail and have a landslide there. One, because that is super, super steep. It's probably good 70-degree angle. Because I live there. I know how steep it is. And I'm very cautious. I won't go down in my section of it without somebody being there. Because it is, it's really steep. And right now, I'm having back issues. And so if I look glassy-eyed, it's because I hurt. Anyway, with that said, the other thing is, is that Heiney admitted that they are dumping the street sweepings down there. And I have said this, I don't know how many times in this community, but there is, it's called PPD. And what it does is it keeps your tires holding together. But that dust gets in those street sweepings and it kills salmon. Tell me about our community. Where do we get our tourism? It's from sportsmen. If you really look around, it's mostly sportsmen. It's the fishermen. It's the crabbers. It's the people who come down here to clam. That's who our tourists are. And I kind of like it that way because they're usually pretty good people. They get up early, though. Anyway, with that said, I think we need to reconsider looking at how we're putting that road in. Because I'm first to say, I agree that they should have a road. But that's not how you do it. Because typically, it's cut away. Go up any logging road, you'll figure that out real quick. It is, it's typically cut away. And then you put your base down and your gravel. And that's how it's done. Because I don't want to have a landslide with a truck in it.
Me neither. Thank you.
I seriously don't. Thank you.
All right. Corin Olesko, you're next.
If it's okay, due to an unfortunate incident, I lost mobility temporarily. Hopefully so. I'm going to read from here. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. As this week our country celebrated Veterans Day, I want to express my gratitude for all of those who served in the military, like our city manager, thank you, Dan, and Tim, and Mr., the new Mr. Dunn, and whoever else has served. Thank you for your service. Thank you. The freedom we have to gather and our freedom to express dissent was and is defended by the men and women who are willing to give and serve. I'm also a disabled veteran. The city council is elected to serve all citizens of Walport. That responsibility is best filled through open collaboration with residents who wish to participate, whether by attending meetings, sending correspondence, or communicating by phone or email. A healthy democracy depends on mutual respect between elected officials and the people they serve. The council functions best when it welcomes public input and responds to criticism with professionalism and transparency. Public remarks suggesting the pursuit of criminal charges against citizens who express disagreement or signed petitions of recall only deepen division and erode community trust. Over the past year, it appears that both the council and city offices may have exceeded the intended limits of the authority granted by voters, at times taking action that seemed punitive rather than productive. I respectfully urge the council to establish a process for reviewing all official statements made to local or regional media before they are released. The city's legal expenses have grown substantially, much of it stemming from actions directed by the city manager. Yet public attention in city council has been focused on a single small expense attributed to the mayor, an amount representing less than 1% of the total legal cost for the year. I recommend that the council assign a rotating member to attend all meetings between the city manager and the city attorney, ensuring transparency and regular reporting to the full council. In addition, I urge the council to direct the city manager to release all communications since 2020 between the city manager and all auditors, including any contact with the state of Oregon regarding city audits. Lastly, any proposed or recent changes to the city charter or council policies and procedures should include meaningful public participation through a citizen work group. The council must avoid any appearance of acting in a self-serving manner or limiting the ability of the duly-elected mayor to perform her duties effectively. Thank you for your time and for considering these concerns in the spirit of transparency, accountability, and service to all citizens of Walport.
Really?
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the list is Tony Thamacus.
My name's Tony Thamacus. I only have one question. When did the meeting take place and discussion that came up with the concept of having the resolution that you put at the end of this for an executive session? That's it, thank you.
Okay, and then it looks like it's JT Dunn?
JV Dunn.
JT Dunn, welcome.
Thanks.
Sir, you, just to let you know, I set a timer for three minutes. So you have three minutes.
I'll try to make it short. I want to thank all of you for your service to our city here. And the reason I'm here is because I got caught up in this. I've lived here 20 years. Everybody Copeland knows me. Everybody Ray knows me. I was the Pacific Coast Handyman, and I'm retired. And I got, tonight, address the audience, please.
Sir?
I got caught up in a pile of shit just recently. And I want to talk to you folks. I know who you are, but you're humans and I love you. I don't care what you are, what you believe. You're all free to do that. But I want to say something about social etiquette. I've never been more modified in my life than I have this last week from the citizens of this town who called me a bigot, told me I was hateful, and I need to figure out my proteins or pronouns or whatever it is. I'm sorry. I'm from Arkansas, but I'm not stupid. I hate when I see people going against each other because of ideology. It needs to stop. I mean, you know who you are. If you're forcing your ideology on people, stop it. You want ideology? Go to church. You don't want to go to church? You're not being forced to, okay? That's all I want to say. And I just want to say I love you all. I don't hate anybody. I got 15 grandkids. I have twin daughters. And I lost my daughter to fentanyl last year in North Carolina. So try to love one another, okay? Truth and love. They cannot be separate.
Thank you. Thank you. And the next on the list is Sherri Solden.
Hi, Sherri Solden. I read the minutes this morning just to kind of come up to speed because luckily, I've been traveling. Had a great time. But anyway, I was shocked to read. And so I have a direct question for you, Heidi. In the minutes, I read that councillor Dunn offered a meeting. Let's see, I should just read from what it said. Dunn made a motion to hold a meeting to address the complaints made against the city manager, and the city recorder would notify the party. And you voted no for that. And I don't understand. I mean, it seems to be what you want.
Did you want me to respond now?
Sure.
Sure. Or do you want to finish?
Well, I guess I also have another question on your lawsuit with the city of Walport. I understand that's done?
No.
It's not?
No, it's still a process, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I would like an answer as to why you voted no. What would bring everything, you know, kind of to be done and over?
Well, I would be very happy for that to be true. I do not believe that the executive session was held in compliance to the ethics commission. And so I was stunned after we came out of that executive session because the majority of the things that were discussed shouldn't have been in executive, excuse me, executive session. As I mentioned in the beginning here, that I did not consent to those minutes because I do not think that those were in compliance. So that was why I said no.
Was this a personnel issue? And isn't that executive session?
There's actually a specific ORS that needs to be used for personnel. And that wasn't used. And so it was a very confusing executive session. And so that was why. And that is what we do, is we come to come together and discuss how we're discussing things and making sure that we're discussing them correctly. And I didn't think, and I still don't think that we did. So I stand by that. However, I still think that the complaint should be discussed. And I was very saddened to see that they were not on this today, this executive session, as it's voted here.
That would be on you. You voted no. You didn't want to.
No, actually, it was not. See, this council runs by majority. So I can vote no, and they're still the majority. So my noes don't stop in the next...
Okay, I'm so confused because they all voted yes to have a meeting. You voted no.
And they all voted that they believe the executive session was handled properly. And I'm still saying that I don't think that it was.
Okay.
So just because a meeting happens doesn't mean that it's over. We have lots of time to go back and revisit things and policy. That's what we do.
Okay, well, anyway, makes no sense to me.
But I appreciate you...
Vote not to move on from all of this.
I appreciate you coming and asking and trying to clarify that because it is very, very confusing. Okay, so with that...
It's a good term, idea. Nice job, Grant.
Okay, so discussion, action, item eight. Are you having a discussion around the memorial benches?
I was just shocked that this was such a high number. $10,000 for a memorial bench for 20 years? I mean, I get that there's, but that doesn't include replacement or anything.
So based on discussions with other cities and how they handle this, and based on the cost of material, it will be a direct quote anytime we do it. So the $10,000 is guidance. We will, you know, if asked to put up a memorial bench, we will agree upon a location that will be sent to the council. If the council does not object, we will then give them a selection of benches that meet ADA requirements. We will then contract, put out a call to a local contractor to install the bench appropriately. And that quote will be given plus a certain percentage that has been suggested to allow us to maintain, based on the material of the bench, maintain that bench for 20 years. And so it will be variable. If you want a bench that is going to be directly exposed to the ocean, it's going to be a lot higher than if you want a bench that is going to be tucked up against City Hall.
So may I make a comment about benches? I really appreciate how Newport does their bench, the memorial benches. I don't know if you've been, I believe it's been on seven, five? So if you go down by local ocean, there's a dock where they have maybe 50 benches that the city purchased and maintains themselves. And then people buy plaques, and they can have the plaques added to the benches. It makes it less expensive for families. Also makes it more interesting when you go because people write really, really beautiful things about their loved ones. And sometimes folks will actually dedicate an entire bench to their family. You know, have like many generations of fishermen and their little stories and plaques on there. So I think that that's something that we should consider.
How long are they good for? I guess that's my other question. Because like, it lasts for how long?
I think that the plaques last as long as the people invest in. I would have to, we'd have to talk to Newport because I don't know if Newport suggests a certain plaque company or if they can go and get whatever plaque. I know they're all about the same size.
Yeah, I've seen other ones, yeah.
But I think that that's a way that we could find a reasonable compromise because other cities have said that the liability of these benches, because when they, if they break, people can get hurt. And the city has to hold that liability. So it makes sense to me that the city would buy and own the benches. Maybe we have them at the park? And then people could buy plaques and put the plaques on the benches at the park?
I think this was a way to fund the park, to get those.
Oh, this is a way to fund the park?
Well, to fund the benches getting at the park.
Okay, I see.
Yeah. I was going to say, are we planning on doing that to our park? But if this is...
That was something we had talked about, that what this is kind of...
I didn't see a mention of a park in here.
This is a city policy because we've been asked for benches all over the city. And we have always responded, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll talk about it. We have a gentleman who lost someone recently, and their family is very interested in having a bench installed along the Kittle Kaufman Trail along the slough. It is our hope that the council will provide an avenue to be able to do that. One of the biggest concerns, and as we just saw, if we buy the wrong material or if material gets abused by citizens, I think dogs chewed on the bench that we saw at the park that Corin fell on. We need to provide a bench that is going to stand up. And a great example of talking to a public works department who encouraged us not to use this model was Newport because of the vandalism they've had repeatedly and the number of citizens who have had to go and replace those benches on their own because they get vandalized. I don't mean to contradict them here at all.
Wait, so you're saying that Newport didn't buy the benches down there? They have this kind of program and the people put the benches down there?
They bought the benches originally and have a program to put plaques. But often, depending on the bench, they get vandalized based on political philosophy. So for example, the bench that Dean Sawyer cares about most, which is the police officer's bench, has been repeatedly vandalized and destroyed. I think three times in one summer impact. So what we're trying to do is ensure that if somebody does want a bench, that we're buying a bench with robust material that will last in our conditions. And that depending on where they want to put it, whether it's the park, whether it's in front of City Hall, which we had just let Dean off for a while back, whether it's along the trail, whether it's in one of the other areas, that we have a mechanism to do so. And the council has a mechanism to say, yes, we think the bench is appropriate there, or no, we don't.
So they recommend we do not do like they're doing because exactly because the benches they shipped don't last well?
They have some durability issues. It's the best way to put it.
So how do we get around that just because somebody else pays for it?
That's the bench price that we're looking at, are benches that are designed for that 20-year lifespan. And that's specifically, we picked vendors. We got quotes from various vendors between $2,500 and $3,500 per bench. But these are benches that are designed with the material and with the paint to last in an ocean climate.
And so why wouldn't the city purchase them and then sell the plaques?
Because if we were going to sell the plaques, if we do not have budget to purchase, you know, if the plaques were, say, $150 and we got 100 people who wanted them, we don't have the budget to purchase 100 benches. If somebody wants a bench for 20 years, we really need to have that investment in that bench. Or table, or, you know, whatever type of endeavor we'd like to see, somebody would like to have installed. You know, really, they have to pay. The whole point of this is that they're paying that cost so that the taxpayer is not subsidizing a bench for their memorial.
But we have benches around town. We don't really have that many. I know we have one down at the gazebo.
We have a handful.
We don't have any, like, I wonder how many do we actually have? Do you guys know?
We have five on the trail.
Oh, there are some on the trail.
At least 10.
About 10.
And we lose one about every, what, two years, could you say? Because they're wood, they don't last as long.
Kitty Wayside, I think, has three, the park by the, over there. One of one.
And none of those benches are memorial?
Some of them are. I do know that.
Long ago, we had a...
But that's from a long time ago.
Yeah, long ago, we had a policy. It has not been policy since at least Carrie, if not Nancy.
Well, then we do.
It was right around, it was right around the end of Nancy Leonard's. And yes, we do have some memorial benches. The memorial benches over here at Meridian Park, right? Were, you know, were memorial benches. Even with the old policy, the individuals normally purchased the bench and installed the plaque. But yeah, that was, that was many years ago. But yeah, that was, that was many years ago. Hasn't been used in a long time.
Do we think people would pay twenty thousand dollars for a bench?
Ten thousand.
Ten. Well, maybe.
Don't double it.
Do we have like a list of people?
I don't know. Is that like the thing, I feel like that's maybe the thing that we're doing is if you want to put in a bench for yourself, then that's what, I mean, the cost of whoever's doing it. But we don't have benches that we're offering to allow people to put stuff on.
And the location will greatly affect the price. For example, if you wanted to put a bench here at the community center and we found a spot, that's a lot easier from an installation standpoint than if, say, the one that is being requested right now, which is a quarter of the way down the Kittle Kaufman Trail. That will be very challenging and that will cost a lot of money to install. That's why we don't want to give, you don't want to say it'll cost five thousand dollars when you go and get the quote, it turns out that it's eleven. You want to give people a realistic expectation that it might be around ten thousand. And then if it's lower, oh hey, by the way, it came in a lot.
So do we have a memorial bench policy now that people can put plaques on a bench?
We have a policy that we do not do this.
So all you can do right now is there's nothing.
Correct.
And so I'm understanding the options are that we explore having people buy their, the whole bench and installation.
Lots of businesses, yeah, that makes sense.
Or I personally would like to see what other cities do, like Lincoln City and Newport and get some different ideas personally. Because I think memorializing your loved ones is a good thing in a city. I don't know. That's my personal feeling. And I just think that ten thousand dollars is a lot of money to ask to do that. So, um, so that's, that's my two cents. I don't know what you guys think about it.
I'd like to motion that we, you go and talk to other cities and bring us back some of their options so we can look at what other cities do.
So can I ask one clarifying question? In the past, I used a couple larger cities, a couple local cities. Is there specific cities that you would like me to address? Say Newport, Lincoln City? I, Florence.
I'd say coastal towns.
Okay, so I will, I will confine my research to coastal communities up and down the world.
Yeah, because I think that Florence actually has all art installations program also. Well, it's another memorialization where the families can donate their art for like six months. It's interesting for, maybe not a bench, maybe something different. Okay, so I'm sorry, you had a motion on the.
Yeah, that we asked the city manager to get information from other cities up and down the coast and bring back to us at our next meeting on kind of what they do.
Does anyone second that?
Second.
Jerry seconded that. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're all in. All right, excellent. Then the next item on the agenda is hazardous mitigation plan resolution.
We don't have the resolution.
It's a large amount of information.
Yeah.
Our practice in the past has been to provide you that information.
Yes.
And then have a motion to bring back the resolution for adoption at the next meeting.
Right.
Give us a hand to read it.
Good, because I agree through the. We're not having a quiz today.
Yeah, that was a laugh.
I'm saying you're interested in asking Jaime to come to the next meeting and walk us through this because it is something like sixty pages long and has to do with FEMA and has to do with emergency preparedness and has to do with future development.
It does have to do with future development? I thought it was just about emergency.
Sorry, Tony.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why wouldn't you do a town hall meeting on that mitigation? That is a huge document and I would think a lot of people are interested in what's going on. I don't think you can do it in a simple resolution. And I tried reading it. Sorry, it came out two days ago and there's way too much information to, to go through in a few minutes. And Jaime doing it would probably help because he at least understands most of the intent. And you guys need to look at what you just agreed to change that you have to vote on for the resolution. The rest of us are just stuck with whatever you decide, but it'd be nice to be included.
Thank you for that input. And what do you, the council think about a town hall over this? I personally find this very fascinating. And I read through it myself and just left with more questions. So I think that that is, it would be great to have more discussion about this because again, emergency preparedness is something that we really do need to focus on. It's odd that I still am shaking your hand. I'm sorry, we don't.
We should call him out.
Yes, Madam Mayor. What, Tony would capitalize on what Tony was saying, having Jaime there would be great. It was, it was very helpful having him at our workshop. Also, there should be snacks.
I second that.
What's a town hall meeting look like?
We really can't do, we really can't do a town hall, but what we can do is a workshop. And essentially it's like what we just did with, it's about, it's all coming together and being able to sit and have more of a discussion. And again, it allow, it's not about voting, it's not about deciding. It's just really a chunk of time for us to really understand and get more information about what we're discussing. And I'm sorry, Councilor.
I wanted to ask Jaime a question.
Sure. If Jaime, you don't mind?
I know who prepared this. Where, where, was there, there was more than just yourself, I believe.
It was, well, one thing to understand is this is an appendix to a county document. So all the cities in the county, the water districts, special improvement districts like the electric company, et cetera, are all appendices of the main document. And so the main document is hundreds of pages long. We're just under a hundred pages or so. And we sat down with myself, the city manager and the public works director and discussed the different threats, the different items on the list and what we have done in the past and, and came up with the plan.
My, my main question was you didn't stay up late at night writing this thing. There was a lot more people and there's a lot more documents involved. Yes. Okay, thank you.
And I believe I'm correct in stating that the county had multiple public meetings. It's also really important to note that this is done and it just restarts the clock. This is a document that's produced by the county every five years. So the county will, within the next six months, start this process all over again. And there will be ample opportunity again for citizens to engage with the county in the creation of the overall document.
We're looking at what affects us here and you made agreements or you're planning on making agreements with the resolution that binds the city. I don't see why you wouldn't want us to be informed about how that affects us and how it's going to affect us in another five years is another issue.
Yeah, I, I, there's absolutely no reason that you shouldn't be informed and have great information. I'm just saying that if you see something in here that you feel that you need to change or want to change, the process is that engagement in the next five year plan.
Is anyone opposed to having a workshop with the citizens in the public and discussing this further? Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
I just have a question though.
Okay.
Not, not against the great, um, my question is if we ha, if we take, is there any way to make a change to this later Jaime? Like, let's say we had a huge issue with something. Is there a way to make a change? I, not that I'm saying we shouldn't have a town meeting, I'm just asking just to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, there is, okay. Awesome.
Well, the problem is, well, it's not a problem. The county has already submitted theirs to EPA and FEMA. And they are through the approval process pending their adoption. It was actually on the agenda for November fifth, a commission meeting at the county. And I hadn't even been asked to put it up. They actually adopted it. So they're waiting for the different cities to adopt it this month to be able to put it out.
Okay.
But if you don't adopt it, then you need to give them a reason why.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm in favor.
Okay, that was great. I like clarification. So.
It needs to be this fun flow.
Yeah.
Part of what Jaime said.
Before the end of year.
Before the end of year, okay.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion for us to have a workshop with the community to discuss these changes with Jaime?
I motion that we work on, set up a date and time for a workshop with the community. Just to go over this stuff.
Is there a second?
I second.
Excellent. All in favor? Unanimously, it is passed. All right, so then the next is item C. Resolution thirteen twenty-six in consideration of modifying the council rules for contacting the attorney. So anybody have any discussion on this?
I think we heard from a public comment that we had not discussed this before and I was looking at the minutes.
Need to test it out.
On page five, or page five or seven, I don't know the sheet number, that we did discuss this last month.
Yes, we did very briefly. Although after I left the meeting last month, I did think to myself, the, the public has asked us to review the council rules in entirety since April. And so I think that it's interesting that you would want to just change one rule without actually having citizen committee review all of the rules to update them all at the same time.
As I was stating, it was addressing the fact that we had not discussed this. We did discuss this at the last meeting.
We discussed it partially, yeah. We can still keep discussing it though.
And that's what this is, is it still a review, correct?
This can be a review or we can vote to sign this resolution. I'm asking the council to continue this discussion, integrate community input because we have been asked to update all of the council rules. So to me, it makes sense that we would act in entirety and not just cherry pick rules to change.
I would think though that this one has come up specifically because there's been a confusion about what the rule is. And I don't think there's any problem in clarifying the rule before we get on to, we have a lot of things on our agenda. I don't know if that's one of our top priorities right now, although it's something that we do want to do. So I think it would be good to take care of this, clear up any ambiguity about what the rule is and then move on.
Well, I do believe that this resolution creates a lot of.
Ambiguity, ambiguity. Such as, so that's what, that's what we're here to discuss though. So what, what do you see as ambiguous?
Well, one, I mean, it was brought up that this rule was brought to place in the last discussion was because of me reaching out to the attorney. And again, I had to think about that over the last month and I realized I never had a discussion with our city attorney. All I did was forward complaints that we were receiving as a council to our legal counsel. That's all that I've done. Somehow that somehow equals to a hundred and five thousand dollars of attorney fees that I'm being said to.
I don't, I don't think any of this.
Yeah. Well, at any rate, we have a hundred and five thousand dollars of attorney fees that we were budgeted for. And it wasn't because of this rule. If it was because of this rule.
Wasn't only because of this rule, it was because of some of this, yeah.
So the, the other question I have about this is that the attorney fees that we have accrued haven't come to council and we haven't voted on them together. So really, they're not following these proposed changes either.
It says anything to do with fees, does it have?
No, it's. Contacting a personal city attorney, a private city attorney. It says that if we were to follow this flow chart, it comes to council. And nobody ever voted, well, to be really honest, no one ever voted to defend the council against my case. I'm being reinstated. And nobody voted as a council, we never had a meeting before a distester voted whether or not the city was going to pay to defend the city manager. So we never had.
Said it was in his contract.
He has contracts, has that. So it's not a council rule.
Well, you know, this is where we're gonna, we're gonna differ and it really, this rule doesn't affect it either way.
Can we go back to the agenda? I think we're, we are, can we do that first?
Item C of the agenda.
Yeah, the one that you're working on now, four, Steve.
The resolution thirteen twenty-six.
Isn't that what we're supposed to be discussing?
Yes.
That is what we're discussing. I'm sorry, I'm just talking about how we access attorneys as a council.
I have a question about this actually. My question was, this says if you have an issue meeting legal advice and then it says ask the city manager. Oh, and then not satisfied, ask a council meeting. At a council. Oh, maybe I just clarified it myself. Sorry, I was thinking like, how do you go about if it's about your city manager, right? Like, who do you talk to? But now it's saying go to the city council meeting. That was it. My bad.
I didn't obviously read that well.
So, so explain this to me, Michelle. So then you're understanding that if we get a complaint about the city manager, the only way we could get legal counsel on that is if we bring it to a city meeting.
Well, I think what it's saying to me, this is how I read it. If we have an issue and it's with the city manager or, I mean, I guess it says ask the city manager, but if it's with the city manager, you obviously wouldn't ask the city manager about it, right? So then we would ask at a council meeting and then the council votes on whether or not we need to, if that's a topic we take to the attorney or we do something else with it. That's my understanding. Thanks. I don't know if everybody else.
And so what, so, so when had complaints come to city council meetings before the last meeting?
About what? About the city manager, you mean?
Yeah, because we got them in August.
Well.
So we didn't do it at the August meeting. We didn't do it at the September meeting.
You sent them to us and nobody responded, which means that we said no and you should seek personal attorney according to this flow chart.
About a complaint about the city manager.
Yeah, I mean, if there's no response, that's a no vote, right?
I don't know. I think that's what I wanted to say.
No, because it wasn't brought to a city council meeting either. That was the.
Yeah, then it would come to a city council meeting.
We brought, we brought it to, we had, that's what, that was part of the executive session for last meeting was we had those complaints and how to deal with them because it, they weren't, it wasn't simple. It wasn't like, you know, we could just impromptu have a hearing.
No, I get that. I remember I wrote a letter in September where I had voted asking of why we had to address it in my emails.
That's why we had the executive session, one of the reasons we had the executive session. So we hoped that we would be able to do it at this meeting. But as you saw on the note on the agenda, that did not, that was not able to happen yet. So it is in process.
Okay, so where did the council decide to get a private attorney to defend the uncovered?
That is not my thought of the discussion right now.
No, it is still about an attorney. It's about.
No, it's not. You're asking us when we decided that. The question is, do we want to change and make this more clear so we know exactly when we're allowed to talk to a council or not?
Okay.
We want to hear the complaints. Make it public.
Thank you.
We want to hear them.
Well, all, all complaints are, all complaints are public except for against personnel. So that's the reason.
There's more than one topic, Jamie.
Yeah.
Okay, so for the sake of this agenda, we're having discussion about how to change or modify the council rules.
Yes.
I am saying, I think it is inappropriate to do this at this time because we have been asked by the citizens to have a council review or a citizen review of all of the council rules. This is not the only council rule that has been of discussion. So that is my input. Now you can have your own and you can, I welcome it all. But I'm saying that I think at this time, this is not the appropriate resolution for what we're doing. And my explanation was because all I did was forward emails to the attorney. That is all I've ever done.
Okay, so my then follow-up question to you is, I guess that you want question, that you want us to talk about all the council things. But I guess what I don't understand is what is the problem with like talking about this one and then like we talk about another one by itself? Why does it have to be like all encompassing?
Well, one, we haven't had any citizen input. This is all on a recommendation of the city manager. Two, two, because when I, what I was told, and Rita can correct me, when these council rules were changed, the last time was in two thousand fifteen, it was because counselors were contacting attorneys over their own personal legal matters, not city matters. So I just wanted to clarify that what I'm seeing is that we're having difficulty handling complaints about the city manager. And I did not believe that the city manager should be handling their own complaints. We don't have a policy on that. We have a federal whistleblowing policy. And in that policy, you would hand it to your legal counsel and they would manage that complaint. But what I'm seeing is that you're asking to remove that step of using a legal counsel, which is your own prerogative if that's what you want to do. But again, I'm saying it's bringing up other legal issues this council has, which is how we've determined how we pay the fees we already have.
I understand that. I just don't understand, obviously, there's like a misunderstanding somewhere in the middle where if you have a complaint about the city manager, taking it to a council meeting, that's the part we missed last time, right? Isn't that, I mean, I think that's why we're having this whole conversation.
I think, I, I think, I think that what I'm thinking about right now is that if I had a complaint against somebody of all of us, all, all of us, you know. somebody of all of us, all, all of us, you know, and I was the one there, which I am and have been in your chairs too, and I had a complaint, and I wanted it to be private and confidential, is that appropriate to ask them to have to come to a city council meeting? You know, or for a counselor to bring up their complaint in a council meeting? Like where are we honoring the citizens confidentiality?
I think because it doesn't say it has to be at a public council meeting. It just would be the council together probably in an executive session, because it would be a personal matter.
Well, if that's true, then we would have had executive sessions, but in our experience, we weren't having, we.
We did last meeting, and, and that's where we decided how we were going to handle it. And we had hoped that would be in this meeting, but because of what you see in the note on the agenda, it didn't come together like that. So it's still in the process to happen. So it isn't that there was a failure. It's happening. It just hasn't happened yet.
This is something we can do right now.
Right.
We may need to do other things later.
Right.
We certainly should be open, but we can make an improvement today that will help things. Make it clearer.
Is that a motion? No, and then what is?
I move the adoption of the resolution to change our council rules in the way that's described in the diagram.
Does that include public comment?
No. What? What are we changing, I guess? Because I don't.
I thought it was supposed to say originally.
We're just, we're just.
I think that was exactly, isn't this exactly what it says?
No. It actually says in the, uh, the charter that the attorney will attend our meetings and we can discuss questions with our attorney in the meetings.
Well, the charter says a lot of things.
Sure, and then that says.
I'm just saying.
So, but that's, that's how it is written, like that we would have legal counsel present, and we don't have legal counsel present. We could, if we decide to do that. And that was the other discussion that we had last month, is about how to have that.
Was it because he was here?
Yes, he was. Yeah, because of these complaints.
Yeah, and he told us things.
Yeah, and he told us a lot of things. So.
One of which was that even if he was here tonight, he couldn't give us an immediate answer, so.
No, but he would be answering the questions we had the last meeting. Like nothing's immediate in city council.
I don't know that we had any questions last meeting, because we met with him and just made decisions.
I haven't met with the attorney by myself.
Nobody's met.
Nobody's met by themselves, but we had a collective session.
Well, we, we didn't make any decisions in the last meeting. We just postponed this discussion.
We did. No, we did, because we came out and documented it in the minutes. So we did.
What?
But I'm not sure.
What do you think is missing from this that the public would have a problem with? I'm just asking. I, I know you want public comment for that reason, but I'm just saying, what do you see that that makes you look at this and go, hmm, this looks like a terrible idea of ways to follow? That's really what my question is.
I think that this, if we were to present this, um, to an attorney who defended whistleblowing, they would have a lot of problems with this. I think that councils should have a right to retain and talk to the city attorney. They don't, I'm, I'm not arguing that.
I think the council, the council as a body, yes, but the one counselor should not be able to do it on their own.
I do.
Because you might be the only person that feels that way.
This says right here. Hold on. I might be wrong. At the request of the, okay, so it says in the B part of this resolution, it says, if at the request of the council, they wish someone besides the city manager to speak directly to the attorney, that shall be decided by the council at the same or subsequent meetings on the specific item or question. And blah blah blah. So, so I read that, that saying that like we can go to the things if we all decide that that's a thing we should do, we can meet with the attorney.
Right, right.
So, so that's interesting to me, because best practices by the League of Oregon Cities is that a counselor goes always with the city manager and speaks to legal counsel together.
Well, I think that we can decide that. Yeah, we can decide anything for sure, yes.
Yeah.
As a council, for sure, yes. Yeah, so, but I'm questioning why we, this came to our table, why this is long here?
Well, I think we need to.
They've forwarded complaints to the attorney.
Something's been said to the attorney without council approval. That's why.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. I, I agree with you, but I think it's because we need to all realize what the proper protocol and steps are to do that, and we should be able to get where we're as a council in agreeance with whatever that is to go talk to the attorney.
I think that the citizens actually, if they had a complaint with us or the city manager, can actually write to the city attorney themselves without any permission from us at all. Okay, so, and we still would accrue that bill.
But that has nothing to do with what we're trying to clarify here.
Right, that's what I'm just clear, I'm just saying, this resolution does not address the situations that you guys are talking about.
Ma'am, ma'am, if I can ask, I, I don't think that's true, because if so, we'd accrue thousands and thousands of dollars.
If the city attorney receives communication from a third party and has not been instructed by the council to address it, they would simply respond, I'm sorry, this is not a matter under consideration at this time, unless it was a tort claim.
Or a complaint.
The city attorney would not address a complaint unless it had come through council. There is a process for that, there's a process
in our council rules for that. The reason this is here is because there needs to be clarity on the council rule.
The council rule, let me read this, oh, the, the, the current rule that we have now, it literally says that you can contact the city attorney if you exhausted all meetings.
Right, so you feel like we all disagree with you, we just.
And the meetings are.
You, if you.
So if I emailed you and you didn't respond, and the complaint was about the city manager, then that's exhausting your meetings. That doesn't just, the, the complaint.
No, but then it says, it says, did you take it to the council meeting?
It's clear if they're not.
It doesn't say you have to do that here.
Right, it doesn't, I know, and I think that's, that's the difference. That's the difference. That is the change.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It does say that in the council rules.
It says that there will be an attorney present in our meetings.
If the council decides.
Well, which they've had before, previous meetings.
We haven't had a city attorney regularly attend our meetings since.
Before Nancy White.
I didn't say that earlier. I said, when needed, that there has been legal.
When, when, when the council has decided they want them there.
But it's usually about contract law, law.
We used to, we used to have a city attorney, back when Richard Hammersley was the city attorney. We had a city attorney who attended every single meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, Rita, I don't mean to interrupt you, because I really want to hear what you're saying, I really do. I just see Megan trying to listen to three conversations and, um, so can you, can you just?
I was, I was just saying that we had a city attorney attend every single meeting. Many times that city attorney was not even called upon to render an opinion. When the city attorney was called upon to render opinion, um, ninety-nine percent of the time, he would say, I'm sorry, I will have to research that and get back to you. And the council at that time looked at the expense of having the city attorney travel and attend, uh, what used to be three and four hour meetings, and decided that they would use him on an on-call basis only, and that drastically reduced the cost of the city attorney.
Sure. Thank you. And then it sounds like Jamie and you guys were talking, you and Michelle and Susan.
Oh, no, I, we weren't talking. I'm talking to myself.
So, we can either table this for the next meeting. You can either go forward with the motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There hasn't been a second to the motion.
I will second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm aye, I'm here with overview.
I'm sorry, Counselor.
I'm a nay.
You're a nay, and I'm a nay too. All right, moving on. Then we have city man, oh, I'm sorry, market summary. I guess that.
It's in here.
I was just curious, so Megan was presenting this? No, this is an report.
Are you talking? I think I was, but I, yeah.
I guess the question is, do you have questions for Megan?
Yeah, that's.
Oh, okay.
I think it is worth noting that we got a hundred percent, uh, you know, in the survey that was, uh, sent out, we got a hundred percent percent feedback that they loved Megan as the market manager and would return, uh, with her operating the market. A hundred percent, not a single vendor decline.
That's excellent. Uh, can we get the survey results?
Yep.
With the council, I would love to see what other concerns or feedback there was. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan, for your work.
Megan, how many can we hold each Wednesday? How many spots is it?
There's technically seventy-one spots.
Okay.
A lot of, this year I had a few that did doubles, you know, where they, so it was a little bit bigger. And that, uh, the food costs obviously take up.
So it's like we were running a full market then, pretty much, right?
They started slow, but towards the middle, we were full, and towards the end, we were full. And I had a few that rotated.
All right, is everyone okay? We're moving on to the city manager's report. All right, then Dan?
Sure. Um, sidewalks are plugging away. The completion time is expected to be late December. Um, we have dealt with some citizen complaints about access. We're trying our best to accommodate them. Um, and, uh, you know, listen to exactly what they are and how best we can fix the issues that they're having. The sewer to the industrial park is done, and as they put it the other day, the water flows and the toilets flush. So that building is getting closer to completion, but our portion is done and operational. Uh, we'll be going out for the engineering, uh, for phase two. That will extend the sewer all the way down, uh, Ann Street and to, uh, properties like South Lincoln Resources and PD and some of the others. So, uh, that project, we hope to complete by the end of next summer, early fall.
Do we have funding for that, or will we be going out for funding?
That is all funded, uh, we saved a bundle going through the, getting the school district agreement in place. That will allow us to complete this without going over the budget for it, so.
So just, is that where the, all this piping is going along Crestline now? Was that always part of that the sidewalk project, or is that, again, extra money?
So that, the, the piping that you're seeing right now going in is the, is the storm drain that had to be replaced as part of that work to the north. Originally, that part of the project, um, came in very, very high, and that's why we had to decline. Thought we were going to move it over on the other side. Um, the benefit of focusing on just a portion between range and school allowed construction costs to change dramatically, um, and we were able to actually get that under budget, uh, with the exception of the piece from, uh, salmon to fall, which is coming out of urban renewal dollars, which is always intended for what the urban renewal dollar is for. Uh, the wastewater project, uh, again, this is going to be a, a floor for the next few years or the next few months. Um, it was always planned that we would, uh, complete this project in a dry month so that we did not have significant, uh, rainfall, uh, and sewer flow. Um, that will take place next summer. Um, we would, had really hoped to be able to get it done this August, September timeframe, but the, uh, computer controller parts just were not readily available. And so by the time they came in, it was already into the rainy season, and we all agreed, including our engineer, that it was a really bad idea. Um, and our wastewater plant operator said, no way. So, uh, Southworth Park, uh, we have a local contractor, uh, who I don't, I don't want to name yet, just because I don't want to get him in trouble. Uh, but he has committed to, to, uh, producing the remaining slabs, um, and getting the concrete donated, so.
I have two questions. Sorry, I, I want to go back to the, um, industrial park animal shelter.
Sure.
Um, when I was up at the high school for the Halloween trunk or treat, they were saying that there was still, um, ditches stuck that haven't been filled in. Do you mean, have we filled those in yet?
My understanding is that there is nothing left on the school property that is not completed. That was the messaging I saw from Rich Baloney the other day, so.
Well, that would have been after, so maybe they went back and closed those up.
I know that they did some late paving in October, uh, when they did the, uh, when they did the parking lot. So I think Rose Regal was there. That would have been probably when the ditches got paved. Um, for those of you who work up the school, is there any open?
The other side of the school, we don't go over there.
Oh, yeah. So there was a ditch that had to be opened up during an inspection. We saw a deflection in the pipe. Um, and the contractor, before we would accept it, had to open that part of the ditch back up and fill it back in, so the pipe had no deflection. You don't want a low spot in your sewer line. It needs to continuously flow. So that was fixed and, you know, re, uh, put together.
And then, um, back to subject four, the software park. Uh, whatever happened to the Jay Larson contract, who was contracted to do the work, and then did we ever do an RFP to do, open it to other contractors?
We, we mutually agreed. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Larson and we agreed to terminate the contract at, with no fault, so that we weren't costing him anything. Yeah, a while back.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, um, my opinion.
You were there. I was the one missing that meeting.
That was at the September meeting?
No, I missed that meeting. You were there because you wanted to review the contracts, and I read that in the minutes.
Because I didn't see it in the September minutes when I missed that meeting. So anyways, I, I just wanted to know what happened to that contract. And then I also was just curious if we ran an RFP for this next mystery contractor?
No, because it is under the price that would require an RFP.
Because it's donated?
Yes.
Labor and materials.
It is, at this point, it sounds like it, I don't know the labor part, but materials will be donated. So labor will be prevailing.
That sounds.
And when will we know on that?
Yeah.
As, he was supposed to come in this week, and then the person who was going to bring him in went hunting again, and we'll know soon.
Was he provided with the engineering plan?
I'm sorry?
Was he provided with any?
No, he doesn't, he didn't feel it was necessary. This is not a.
That's what Jay Larson said too, and then he said it really was. So that's why it wasn't finished.
The concrete's loud now.
Well, that's why they're ripping out the ones that are already there. Right?
That's not, what, what he did, it was the concrete, but it was not what he set up. It's not, it, not anything you would need to engineer out. You can, it's just a quite an expense to engineer it out.
Well, the property's already been engineered. I was just wondering if that plan had been shared. We've already engineered that whole property.
I am not sure. We did a pre-engineering plan, we've now had it full, so, because that would have cost us two hundred thousand dollars.
I appreciate your input. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kenner, please continue with cedar repair.
Cedar repair, uh, we have, uh, done, you'll see our new roller, um, attached the skids here, and we will have the patches that are in place right now that we didn't have the roller in time for, um, will be ground down here in the next couple of weeks so that they're nice and flat. Um, and we believe we've got, uh, public works has addressed, uh, Mike's idea seems to have worked. It's not leaking. So we're not going to get a sheet of ice on cedar. And then, uh, next spring, we will do an RFP, uh, to, uh, local paving companies to have them, um, strip, uh, the, an inch or two off of the current asphalt and pave cedar entirely. Uh, uh, along with that, we're going to do an RFP for a seal, uh, a, a seal coat on, uh, the portions of range and Crestline that we own. Um, and, uh, we will be scheduling the work at the end of, at, uh, at the end of, uh, cedar, uh, where it turns, uh, that's kind of failing. Uh, that will turn back into a road. Uh, the hope is that we'll still receive money for that, but if we don't, we're still going to plan and schedule the work for next summer. And we're going to get that out in the January, February timeframe so that it gets on the road and driveway's calendar, instead of waiting till we know if we have the money. Uh, we are in the middle of an IT overhaul. Uh, city hall was done yesterday, the library was done yesterday. We had a few hiccups in the library, which meant that we got to this building late. Um, the unfortunate side effect of that was that the wifi node was not operational by the time he left. Uh, he is scheduled right now to return on Monday to complete that work, uh, for all the buildings. Um, we're also going to have a press release because this goes hat in hand with a large grant that, uh, Councilor Townsend had recommended that we received, uh, that will, you know, heighten the city's cybersecurity. We'll also be removing all on-prem servers from the city hall building so that if it gets wiped out in a tsunami, all of our data is in the cloud and very secure.
So, I'm sorry, I, I just was reading today about, um, Deepo Bay and their lack of an audit the last five years. And they were saying one of the worst hiccups that they had was the IT transfer because they lost documentation, and so are we prepared to have that?
Yes, we have, we have triple redundancy on that. Uh, we have what's called an error gap backup, which means we take a backup and it is secured outside of the system that could create a problem. Uh, and then we have our standard backup, and then we are transferring to the cloud. So we should not have, and we have confirmed that during our, uh, one of the challenges that our auditor is having is we did in two thousand twenty-three one of the challenges that our auditor is having is we did in 2023 convert our financial system from one system to another. And so they are having to use two different systems. But those are also both backed up and backed up with that error gap method so that we cannot lose any data.
Great.
Just as a quick side note, I did post something on social media. We did hear from our auditor and they basically just said, hey, we're working, we're running as fast as we can to the goal line. And that they would reach out to us if they needed anything. That's great, but we're still calling them once a week on Mondays just to see where they are. And I think they're getting sick of us, but we're gonna keep pestering them because obviously we need to catch up.
Can you please forward that email to council?
Yes.
Thank you.
Roof repair, I just received a word right before the council meeting. They are tentatively scheduled right now to come and replace that metal cap next Thursday and Friday. Now, that's tentative, if the weather is horrible, it may get pushed out. But that is our current hope, is that they will come, get that finished next week and then we will be able to reopen the interpreter center, which I'm very excited about.
I have, you have a happy employee.
We were informed by the county clerk on Monday that over review, that they determined that there were multiple violations of ORIS 260.567 that invalidated petitions for the recall. And so Megan was required by Oregon law to, to declare the recall a failure. And then lastly, we have, one of our employees has given notice that he will be retiring January 1st, Jimmy Rodriguez. And so we will be, we have decided after discussion and my staff beating me up a little bit that we are going to seek a contract for custodial services through different providers and see if we can get one that meets the budget. And then we will be hiring, for Jimmy's position, a general landscape slash building maintenance employee. This person ideally will take over some of the landscaping duties that we have contracted out right now in the summer. So in the summer, they will spend most of their time outside doing things. And in the winter, when it's, you know, we still have to mow, we still have to do some of this stuff. But in the winter, they will spend a good proportion of their time doing projects around our buildings such as refreshing paint, fixing, you know, minor problems here and there. Touching up, I can see scratches on the wall behind you over there. Stuff like that, that, you know, just makes the buildings look a little lived in. We'll try to get addressed during the winter, so things will get better.
Moving displays, museum.
Moving displays, museum, all sorts of things. So that, that, uh, proposal for, should go out within the next week. We are having some challenges with the website transition. Doing both IT and the website at the same time is a little frustrating. The, half our website is working and half of it is not, which is frustrating, but we should have that sorted. I have a conference call with them next week to figure out exactly where they are. And the hope is that during the downtime over Thanksgiving holiday, we can finish that transition and have our new website up. Cause that's really inhibiting putting some notices that we'd like to get out there and having things kind of stably readily available.
Questions from council? Alright.
I guess I would like to give Dan an opportunity to talk to Teresa's concern about the steepness of the roads, of street sweepings that I admitted to.
So, we had an occasion to drop a pile of street sweepings down at that site while we were working on the public works site. It has now been moved back and, really the guidance and discussing it with DEQ, it's now back at our public works site and car pit, as we've always done. We're also talking with DALL about the ability, so right now, DALL does not have the direct ability for us to take sweepings directly to the dump, which is ideally what we would do. So we are talking with DALL about how we can facilitate that. Otherwise, our plan right now is we just hired a contractor to put in a thirty-nine foot by a hundred and forty-five foot concrete slab at the public works facility. That will allow us to have stores of rock, stores of chip and be able to have some of our disposal sites at that site that, to meet the DEQ requirement and more readily give us that opportunity to then easily just fill them in the dump truck and take them to Coffin View if that's the distance we have to go to dispose them.
And that's the public works, the DALL's facility?
No, the public works facility up by the industrial park.
Right, but that I call it the DALL's because they didn't buy that property for DALL's.
I think everybody bought the property for DALL's.
Is there a need to have space to store asphalt also? Or is that something you'd get it has, and has needed?
Generally asphalt, unless it's contaminated, chunk asphalt is considered clean fill by DEQ. There are specific, you know, so the, the contractor, the generator of the waste makes that determination. But in general, chunk asphalt, not ground asphalt, but chunk asphalt is considered clean fill by DEQ. And in fact, in conversation with DEQ, they said specifically that it's what's called a beneficial use when creating a road. I.e., that's what they'd like you to see do with it because it contains it, it puts it in a fixed place. The issues that Ms. Carter was talking about in terms of the tire runoff and street sweeper picking that up, yes, that can create concentrations, but you have to keep in mind, we have miles of roadway directly along the slough, along the river, along the highway. That stuff, if it's being generated, is going directly into the water from these roadways. The street sweeper is not creating an abnormal concentration of this.
I was really trying to find out about the, the raw asphalt that they would use to make patches.
No, raw asphalt is something that either you can use what's called coal patch or hot patch. Coal patch is in containers that we keep in the building. And hot patch, you have to get from the plant.
Right, that's what I mean.
Cause they have to make it.
Right.
So, as far as the steepness, the engineering?
We are using a professional road builder who has done more roads than I have probably driven in my life in terms of creation. I trust that he is making a solid, very stable, very safe roadway. I would not endanger, nor would my public work staff endanger our staff by building a roadway. There are many ways to make a road. I trust that these are professional staff who know what they're doing.
So who, who is the contractor?
Who is making the road?
Yeah.
We've been working with Jimmy Smith.
Jimmy Smith, and so he's the one that's dumping the fill?
No, the fill is being generated from Rodriguez Construction, which is doing our sidewalk project.
Okay, and then you're, in the workshop, you were saying that you were fixing a road and then that you were working for a gravity speed line. My understanding is that this is a dump site, not of fixing the road.
That is totally incorrect.
Building a road.
Not building a road, I was told that we were fixing this, I thought.
We fixed the upper road.
Two different roads.
And building a lower road.
And building a lower road, and then we do have engineering plan?
We do not need engineering plans on this yet.
And then did council approve or vote for this road to be built?
The city manager just is in control of, thinks he's in control, we don't, we don't.
This is an operational concern, not a policy.
So we don't, the council doesn't approve of, uh, infrastructure or maintenance of public works?
I believe that's nothing good to the city.
Yeah, this was, this was brought up both last year and this year in our goal session as something that we're doing. This has been communicated multiple times to council over the years. I've produced the same map several different times, prior to you and post you being here, saying, hey, this is what we're doing.
The map that I saw showed this property as residential one, not as a public works facility. So that's where I'm very confused. The ball property is a private, private property the city bought. Where is there land use meetings? Maybe honey could answer that? Have we had land use meetings?
I don't understand what you're asking.
So we bought the ball property, my understanding, I wasn't here, so I'm just really trying to understand. We bought the ball properties, it was fourteen acres for $65,000. It had existing easements already on it. And my understanding is that we bought that property to turn it into parks and trails.
No.
No.
Okay, well, if it was, the intent was to become a public works facility, is that what you're saying?
It's not, it was for access to.
It's just an access road.
So it is not public facilities zone?
It, we have not re-zoned, so public facility is an overlay. So we have not re-zoned it to public facility, but, you know, because R1 meets our needs right now for public facilities. However.
To build the road and to dump the waste.
Again, we're road building, this is not a dump site.
Well, I, I question that, cause I saw the video of it and it did not look like any road I'd ever seen built. And I also have built roads before with cities and you can't build a road on a seventy percent grade. Actually, more than thirty percent grade is considered unbuildable.
And I would say that you're not getting great information.
Well, I would say I'm very concerned council is not getting information.
My council is not concerned, so just leave it there. This is seven, this is seven.
Okay, that's fair, council's not concerned, the city manager is building a road that I'm engineering, using city funds on a property that has not been determined what the use of is for.
It's a very strange phrase of the whole thing.
We have absolutely determined the usage. It was purchased with sewer funds from the Sewer Enterprise Fund so that we could maintain and improve our sewer infrastructure on that piece of property.
So there is a DEQ permit for that then?
We don't need a DEQ.
You do if you have a sewer property, all public works property has to have a DEQ.
And again.
But it's not, I'd say we're going circles.
Yeah, and you were.
Because they're saying it's not DEQ, it's not public facilities.
You were talking about the pump station itself, which does have a permit, not the entire property. The entire property does not need to be permitted because the pump station that is on it is.
I'm saying that I do not see any proof of a road being built. I see hundreds of tons of fill, is what it's being called, dirt, asphalt, sewer materials being dumped. I don't think council's aware of it, some of them are saying we don't need to be aware of it. I think we do need to be aware of it and I do think that DEQ has to permit it if that is what the function is. I don't care what the function is, as long as we all agree, and I say all, cause this is all of us, all agree with this. And usually, in my experience, the planning department has public meetings where we talk about public recently obtained properties and what the uses of them are going to be. I know that sounds funny, but the public just get to decide what happens to the property that the city buys.
We have public meetings pretty much every month.
Really, so you had a hearing about the ball property? Can you tell me the date of it?
I didn't say that.
So, if zoned off, that does not mean it can't be used for governmental purposes.
That's, I agree.
It's actually a use in the code, governmental purposes. You can also put a park on it. You can put a recreation facility. You can do a governmental facility such as a sewer plant, water plant, or a road.
If you had the DEQ permit to do the sewer plant or the water plant?
We're not doing a plant.
Right, I agree, we already have one right next to it and we already have easements.
But we're doing a road. And a road is not something that we need to get go through the planning process because of the public road with a maintenance access.
On an R1, so.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay. I'm concerned that.
Did you not call all the agencies you're concerned about? And I think we've heard from them that they are not having a problem with the road being built and how it's being built? Is that not the case?
That's not the case.
Okay, what is the case?
The case is that I have not heard back.
Well, you haven't heard that, but we have heard back.
So you have letters from the DEQ?
I don't have letters, we certainly have some for cities.
I certainly have a letter from DEQ saying that they didn't tell you what you told the police officer.
Right, I didn't tell the police officer anything other than that there is illegal dumping.
Well, I, I have a, I have an interview with you, Deputy Dorsey, that says that you were specifically told by DEQ to bring in protect Oregon watershed. So are you saying that the deputy?
No, they said that they could, that there was nothing stopping the protect watershed from accessing the public property. And I said to Deputy Dorsey, how is this not public property? And she said that it was public property and that there wasn't. That is why we have this executive session to make this resolution. Cause currently, it is not considered trespassing on a residential one.
So why are we talking about it now if we're talking about it in executive session?
Because we're talking about council concerns, Michelle, we're now at council concerns and comments. And my concerns and comments is that the city manager keeps referring to the ball property as a public works facility.
I've never once heard you say that.
He does not want a facility.
Never heard of a facility.
I can forward the emails to you. Great.
You are so contrary.
Yes. Yes, it's fine, I, I guess we should just allow there to be dumping and everything, we don't know anything about it.
I get it, it's not dumping.
Well, I.
Dumping, I was so.
Quiet. If you.
Now be quiet.
If you called about it and you haven't heard back, then when we hear back, then we'll know, right?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, so then what's the problem?
That we don't know yet.
Okay.
Okay.
We don't know, great. I don't, I'm not trying to be like condescending, I mean like, we keep talking about it and we have no proof of anything yet.
Well, no, I'm sorry, Amy just told us that it was residential one. It's not a public facilities.
Yeah.
It's not zoned for public facility use.
But you also said that it's not.
You said it all, one hundred percent.
Last time I checked, the sky was not falling.
I'm sorry, I didn't even listen to your mouth.
You did.
I'm sorry, you said that it could be used for public facility use.
It could be used for public facilities such as water treatment plants, roadways, parks, recreation facilities.
An R1.
In an R1.
But then when you turn it into a public works facility, it gets permitted by DEQ.
It's turned into a public works facility and turned into a road.
It's a park, not permitted by DEQ. If it's an access road, it is not permitted by DEQ. If it's a sewer plant, it is permitted by DEQ.
That is what I'm trying to say.
But it's not a sewer plant, it's a road.
I, I, there is the sewer plant, the wastewater plant is down there.
Not on that front.
The road is being built to connect an access road. So I'm just trying to clarify, I'm concerned, I don't have enough information. I, this is what we do in the state, to get more information.
I know, but when, but him telling you exactly what it is, doesn't that, I mean, he is our city planner. I feel like he's very knowledgeable.
And I think that's great, he totally, he does exactly.
So, we're actually all agreeing. Oh, okay, so you are okay with it now because he's saying that it's zoned as an R1 and allowed to have an access road on it?
I'm questioning the access road, but I agree that it's R1.
Well, that's not it, it's you.
Did we have more in the city manager report?
No, we're done.
Can we move on?
That is the end of the city manager.
Alright, stand. Anybody else have any concerns or comments that they would like to make?
Concerns or counselor comments, those are two of them.
I'm saying counsel comments and concerns, that that's what we're asking for.
I just wanna let people know that the random reindeer sale is happening at the school this weekend. Put on mini boosters, helping local artists, so if you have time, just come up and give them a scoop.
South Lincoln Resources, holiday food baskets, had closed their applications, two hundred and thirty-seven families. Will be receiving three boxes of food to give all the trimmies, thanks to the community for the donations. Distribution day is the twenty-second of November. If anybody comes to you and says, oh my, I miss Thanksgiving, they can show up at two o'clock on the twenty-second and they'll get an application, fill it out, and they will receive food.
Do you need more volunteers or?
Always need volunteers.
Yeah, do you want a volunteer? It's the best place to volunteer, it's not those guys.
That's great.
I think Todd, is he still here? I think we, I answered your question, so you were talking about the asphalt behind township and not down by the, the trail, is that correct?
Yeah, we're, and originally, yes, and we're actually concerned about all of what we're seeing now.
I'm just making sure that, the picture that we talked about, so.
Yeah, and my concern, like, now is, uh, Mr. Cutter said chunk asphalt's okay, but the loose stuff is not. The picture shows a hill of.
No, he said ground stuff, when they grind it up.
What's that?
When they grind it up and make it into a powder, it's different than chunks.
Okay, well, the pictures, I'm not looking at powder, I'm looking at.
The chunk asphalt, chunk is okay.
So wait, which asphalt is okay to dump?
Yes.
Chunk asphalt, which is the large pieces like this, is okay. It's considered.
Okay, what about the small, dark chunk pieces?
Small pieces, that's still aggregate, that's considered chunk. What we're talking about that becomes a hazard is when they grind it in an asphalt grinding plant and it becomes a powder.
Oh, like, a powder, like you could inhale.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the, the hill of really small pebble asphalt is also. That would be called raw.
Unless you can't handle it, I don't know.
Right, okay.
And let's see, um, and then Teresa, let's see, talked about that. Um, I had a concern. You stated that you, you have back issues, having trouble walking. I would really ask that you not go back there and trespass on that property. That's very dangerous. You get hurt back there. It'd be, oh, Jackie, that'd be very dangerous for the city, and I think it'd be a liability for the city.
I'm sure she'll watch the video.
Yeah. Um, and then.
I'm curious, are the, did trespassing signs new or have they always been?
They've always been there.
So it's nothing new? We didn't just put them up because they were down there?
Uh, I believe they were up there since the ball property was owned by Ball County.
Well, the way it was sounding was like they got put up because people were going down there.
I don't know. That's a good question.
No, they were already in our area, just our garden.
Actually, sir, the one that recently went up was the one that went up a couple of years ago when we had our issues at the end of fall, all of a sudden it appeared.
So, okay, so there wasn't, you know, trespassing until Teresa started, um, coming to council complaining about the dumpsters?
Yes, but fortunately she left her bucket at home.
No.
Okay.
So we get that. And then, the only other thing that I got, it, it's been kind of bothering me. So, we've talked about, um, Dan put things on the internet, talking to law enforcement, talking, you know. Um, we vote, I know we talked about it in December, at our December meeting, telling him to do this. But I just wrote something up to maybe be more clear, um, and, and hopefully you guys will agree with this or not. Um, I put, uh, since the beginning of twenty twenty-five, we have repeated comments regarding the actions taken by the city manager to protect the city from questionable actions by a third party. Some have said that the city manager was not acting in the role as a city manager to provide clarity to the actions requested of the city manager and to clarify the actions by the city manager from our December meeting of last year. I hereby move that the city council acknowledge that the city manager was instructed to communicate with, with and turn in items over to other governmental entities regarding the city's investigation into a third party. Furthermore, the city council ratified that the city manager's actions with regards to the release of documents and information to the press, to law enforcement, and to citizens detailing the results of the city's investigation, and that all actions taken in that regard, including adversary to the other governmental entities, are a, are expected part of his duties as a city manager and to uphold the law and to protection of the city of Walport. I believe we all told him to do it in December. I'm just asking, um, that we, that we move to accept this as a more clear understanding. Now, that doesn't mean we agree how you did it. Sorry about that, Dan. Uh, you know, I think we all have some, some issues of going too far, but we never addressed that. We addressed anything coming up, turned it over to authorities, to the media, um, we never went any further than that. So, um, I just want to clarify that from our December meeting.
What was the minutes from the December meeting that you said?
It's, I don't have the December minutes with me, but, um, in December, um, it was asked, what do we do with this information? Um, and at that time, we, as the council, said, everything you have, turn over to the authorities and to the local, and to the agencies, let them deal with it.
Okay, I remember seeing that motion and that.
So anything we had, uh, to get turned over to, uh, those agencies. So, I just kept seeing online that, um, you know, that he overstepped his, his role. We gave him that authority. We may have not have been clear on how far to take that, but we gave him, so I guess that relied, that, that falls back on us.
So you, I'm so sorry. I'm really trying to understand this. You, you gave him authority to turn over the information he found to the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office to do an investigation?
Anything that we, that he gets or, or gets a hold of, um, was to be turned over, or any information that he receives was to be turned over to any agency that it particularly dealt with.
Okay, in regards to anything?
Anything that came, that we're, we're dealing with at the time, yeah.
So beachcombers.
A lot of beachcomber stuff, yeah, so.
And so, and then what are you saying now?
I just want to clarify that, you know, because some.
With the motion, so I would like to hear it again.
Oh, um, you know, I just want, oh, okay.
Or is it a motion?
I'm making a motion that, you know, we acknowledged that we instructed the city manager to, um, put this stuff out in the different areas such as law enforcement, media, um, and so forth.
I think, I mean, it's already in the minutes. Do we have to make another motion about this?
I just want to make it more clear, so that it's clear and we have, because there's questions about it.
I don't think we need to have another motion. We have a charter that tells him what he can do, and we had, we had a meeting that was minuteed and said what we can, need to do. I don't think we want to go back and clarify anything else. Anybody who wants to look, go back to the December twenty twenty-four meeting and look at the charter under the powers and duties of officers for the city manager. It tells right there what he's allowed to do.
But you guys all do remember.
Well, it's in the minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then, oh, the last thing is, I know over the last several months, a lot of stuff's been online, back and forth. I'm just asking if we could all take a break. It's, we're in November, December, this is the holiday time. Uh, the time to spend with family, you know, to just reflect on all the great things. Let's just take these next two months and just, you know, really love each other and see if we can't not bash each other and just, you know, I call it two months of positive speaking online. Let's just see if we can do that. Let's see if we can get past all this.
How about no speaking online from city officials? It's in your charter and a void handbook.
See, we can.
Okay, it's also in working law. They should not use social media. We actually got a response from the Secretary of State about him, and it says, Mr. Cutter seems to confuse political speech with city business.
I'm on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, do your job.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'm hearing the people. That is my job.
This is really hearing your side.
Okay. I'm hearing you all. I've been, I mean, everybody changes messages, but please, but please, thank you.
Not all he sent his messages, but the private sites.
But please, thank you. Okay, so, in, in line with this being December coming up and a holiday and loving everybody, I would like to go to the topic that Jerry Townsend brought up, where it's saying that it's going to be moved to December, Jerry?
Yeah.
And I'm asking that our December meeting be focused with League of Oregon Cities and have them come and work with us in a workshop. I mean, I see you looking at this.
In regards to what?
Well, I'm, so I wasn't really clear either, but Jerry was telling me before the meeting
Oh, yeah.
that they want to help us be able to deal with complaints and deal with things.
Well, no, that's not what, that's not true. That's not what I said. What I said was that I had learned through the convention in Portland, which I attended for three days, about other cities and how they've handled, uh, public comment and public complaint, how they responded to it. We don't have a good way of doing that. We don't have a consistent way of doing it. Sometimes we will answer. Sometimes we'll do something later, maybe, but we really haven't worked that out. I'd like us to agree upon a way of giving every citizen a response, a good response. And whether we agree or disagree with them, whether, but, but they need to be heard, they need to be, you know, honored. And, you know, I'd like that to happen. Second thing is, there, I haven't even found it yet in the, in the multiple powerpoints that I downloaded for all the sessions I attended. So, but there was a statement that was incredible about the commitment of the council to the community and how it was executed. I want us to consider such a statement, you know, for the future. And, you know, I think this could go a long way to getting rid of the sky's falling and you're a bad person kind of thinking that we've been dealing with for far, far too long. It is not going to attract quality people to get elected and sit here and spend. You know, I've been to six meetings in the last month outside of this body. And I'm happy to do that because I'm retired, I don't have to work, and I've got data, I can do this stuff, you know? And I have to drive to some of them, that's part of it, you know? There are several of us that, that have to do that because we, we can. Um, and it's important that we have people in the council willing to do that. This group of people I respect, I love, and we stand together as a group. I hope that we can get to a better place.
I agree. And so Jerry, I think we all agree, and so my, my ask is that we spend the December meeting, that we ask League of Oregon Cities to come and do a workshop or a retreat with us, a council retreat, so that we can go over those things and talk about those things and realign ourselves for the new year.
What he's saying is it wasn't League of Oregon Cities that did it, there's different entities that show up and speak about their cities. So he's saying he's taking it from all the different entities.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. League of Oregon Cities does, I'm, I'm sorry, they do go to do workshops with council.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm just saying, like, I, I'm always.
So I think that they would help us with those things, is what I'm trying to say, is I think that that would be a group to come to facilitate that for us, and so.
I'm curious, have you made notes to the council meeting, and you guys should have a workshop instead, or you have a?
I'm happy if it's in a workshop or in the city council meeting. I, I don't care if it's, both of them are open to the public.
I'm confused by what you're saying.
I, I, the, my goal wouldn't be to make decisions, so it could be a workshop. The goal is to have League of Oregon Cities come, work with us, um, give us some guidelines, suggestions of best practices of other cities of what they're doing, because I agree that this, the last year has been very, very, very stressful for everyone. And citizens, taxpayers, counselors, volunteers, staff, employees, we're all struggling, and I don't think any of us want to take that into the year. I'm excited to hear what you have to say, Jerry.
I don't know what you.
So I'm making a motion.
I'm relaying other people's ideas that are better than mine and better than Lee Coler so far. For the DEQ, that's, that's what I'm worried.
What does that look like at League of Oregon Cities council? I don't even, I don't even know.
So, so I, I'm going to.
Is this a charge? Do we have to pay for them to show up?
Most likely, there would be some charge, I would imagine, from League of Oregon Cities, but I don't know for certain. They might come for free because we're all members.
I would love to hear it.
Madam Mayor, may I say one thing? Having been in charge of setting up meetings with League in the past and other entities like that, to ask for it in December might be, since, given holidays and other things going on, um, so you might make a motion to have, you know, to have that looked into and possibly scheduled for December, but it may well be in January.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I was just going off the note that it was going to be held earlier until December. So that's only, this is my broad December, and we were talking about December, um, but I wouldn't be opposed if they could come in December or into January.
Yeah, I think it'd be great if you got information on if there is a cost and or.
So would you like to charge me with that? Is that?
Yeah.
It's council.
I know. I don't know. Do we have to make a motion at all? I just think like if it's, if it's your thought to bring all locked people, like, I think it's a great idea.
But I don't think we should, without, if there's a cost, it needs to be voted on by council.
Well, sure.
Yeah, it's not just something one person can decide.
So, but I'm being charged with reaching out to League of Oregon Cities, asking if they will come to our council and work with us on these things that Terry just discussed, or Jerry's, sorry. It's your Townsend, I put them together, Townsend and Jerry, and Terry.
I'm interested to hear what he has to say too, because maybe his conversation will be, I don't mean good enough, like, bare minimum, but he might just have great things that we're like, oh yeah, let's do that, that sounds awesome, and then maybe we don't need to be locked to him, but.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'd kind of like to hear Jerry's presentation first, and that may take us a long way.
Yeah.
Jerry, would you like to just present to some people?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that would be a first step, and, and then, you know, we all can decide whether, whether we want to go further uh, and with other resources, um, or not. It may, it may be we don't feel a need for it, and maybe we do.
And in the meanwhile, I will reach out just to see what a cost, what they propose, and what their availability is, and go forward with that. We can, we can discuss if we want to go forward with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. All right then, any other comments or concerns?
I guess, um, a person here raised the issue of social media. It's, it's, it's been a really difficult thing for me. I know we always had a policy where we didn't, but I think at one point, then, some people were. And so, you know, it's like, the biggest thing for me is that you've got these, these sites where people can say anything they want. Often, it's not true, or it's a misunderstanding of something, and I think it's, I, I don't think you can just leave it out there, because people believe it, you know, they hear it, they hear it, they hear it, they hear it. They believe it as if it's true. So I think that we could very well have a discussion about social media and how to deal with it.
Times change.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. The problem is that what you're responding are, are private sites.
Please stop.
No, no, you know that they're meant, for all communities, it is a private site that, if you join them, you have to be approved.
Please stop.
We're all members.
No, most of the concerns, most of the citizens are not members.
But we are.
Right, so what you do is if there's a problem that comes up, then you formulate a response, and you put it on your city of Walport page.
Hey, can we stop, stop her yelling at us?
I'm sorry, I'm asking you to stop. I'm sorry.
But don't talk all year. You are great, you're just a public employee candidate.
I'm sorry, man, you have to stop. Everybody's getting upset with you disagreeing with them.
Well, they listen over here and run their mouth, so.
It's supposed to be fair.
It's not legal and it's not ethical.
Please stop, please stop.
Include other citizens.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
City manager Cutter, wasn't it, um, told by the attorney that it was, we, we couldn't prohibit council?
Not true.
I thought we could speak as a private citizen, but we could not speak on behalf of the council, was the way that our charter was written.
We can talk about city businesses.
We had, we had a, a clause that we put in there, but it was being valid, that, correct?
The rule basically got shot down. The rule basically got shot down by legislation, because it's a bit.
If, if we don't calm down, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Please adjourn, all right? Just, do you want us to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all in motion of adjourn the meeting. All right, I'm adjourned in tonight's meeting. Thank you very much. Sorry for all these heated emotions.
Ethics, ethics, ethics.
Think of class on last.
The worst one without class is him.
No to these, no to these.
I am bell heart.
Well, goodness gracious, folks, what a meeting, what a meeting. Um, I am not sure if they are going to continue on with the executive session. Um, I'm going to hang out. See, uh, if they continue on with the executive session, and if so, I'll let you know how that turns out and what results, if any, some of it. Well, folks, it sounds like there is not going to be an executive session tonight. Uh, it sounds like everyone is going to wrap up and get on out of here. So I'm going to do the same, rub up with a cause. Catch you on the next one, folks.